Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county Administrator Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, its life well-run.
Good morning. The Kent County Board of Commissioners meeting will come to order. I'd like to take a moment and welcome you all and wish you a Happy New Year. My name is Lisa Posthumus Lyons. I am the new Kent County Clerk, recently elected and having been sworn in earlier. It is my responsibility and privilege to temporarily chair this meeting. Our first item of business is I ask all of the elected county commissioners to please stand for the purpose of being sworn in. Please raise your right hands. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of the office of Kent County Commissioner according to the best of your ability?
I do.
Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, I call the 2017 Kent County Board of Commissioners organizational meeting to order. I'll begin by calling the roll. Commissioner Antor.
Here.
Commissioner Bolter.
Here.
Commissioner Breavy.
Here.
Commissioner Volkowski. Commissioner Hennessy.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Corndyke.
Present.
Commissioner Mast.
Here.
Commissioner Melton.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Here.
Commissioner Saulfeld.
Here.
Commissioner Skaggs.
Here.
Commissioner Steck.
Here.
Commissioner Tallin.
Here.
Commissioner Vonk.
Here.
Commissioner Voorhees.
Present.
Commissioner Womack.
Here.
Excellent. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Voorhees to offer an invocation.
This morning, we're excited as we begin a new term and a new year as well as the County Board of Commissioners. And to acknowledge the welcoming of new fellow commissioners, Betsy Melton, Robert Womack, and Mr. Skaggs, we're thankful for your joining us. Also, for not only the elected to the commission, but those that are elected to serve in Kent County government, such as our new county clerk, Lisa Lyons, and also to our new train commissioner, Ken Yonker, and also to, what's the next one? Ken Yonker, Chris Becker. Is Chris with us this morning? You're not our new prosecuting attorney. But then also those that have returned, Sheriff Stelma, and also with Ken Parrish as our treasure. As we get into this morning, I thought before we do the invocation, we might just be reminded that as Kent County, we have a mission statement. And I'd like to share that at this time. The mission of Kent County government is to be an effective and efficient steward in delivering quality services for our diverse community. Our priority is to provide mandated services which may be enhanced and supplemented by additional services to improve the quality of life for all our citizens within the constraints of sound fiscal policy. I also would remind us, a phrase I've always credited to our Administrator, Darryl De Labio, that we must remember to respect people, respect the process. And as we go forward, that should be our goal as well, to respect each other and to respect the process. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, again today, as the Kent County Board of Commissioners and those who have been elected to serve in Kent County government, and those that have been elected not only, but selected, those who work within the staff and in the services of providing for our community, for Kent County and its residents, we ask your guidance, your direction, and above all, we ask for protection, especially to those who lay their lives on the line every day in the service of keeping our community safe. We're thankful that we can acknowledge you, and your word says that you, your desire for us is that we would prosper and be in good health. And we pray that for each and every person involved in Kent County government and to all those to whom we serve. We ask your continued blessing. We acknowledge you as our provider. In Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to remind the commissioners that after they've signed their Oaths of Office, to please pass them down to Kim Perry at that end of the table. Moving along the agenda, our first item of business is the election of the Board Chair. I'd like to open the floor for nominations for Chair of the Kent County Board of Commissioners.
Madam Clerk, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Jim Saulfeld, Chair of the Kent County Board of Commissioners.
It's been seconded, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any more nominations?
Madam Clerk, I would move that nomination because a unanimous ballot be cast for Jim Saulfeld as Chair of the Kent County Board of Commissioners.
So moved. All those in favor of Jim Saulfeld for Chair signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Excellent. Welcome, Commissioner or Mr. Chair, Jim Saulfeld. Congratulations.
And good luck.
My job here is done. Let's be real, everybody. And Chair. Yes.
Well, thank you. I'm privileged and honored to accept being your Chair again for this year. And just say a few words, it'll only take me about 20 or 30 minutes. No, actually, I'm kidding. We do things pretty efficiently here at the county. That's how we did them last year. That's the way we're going to do them again this year. We got a lot done last year. I think chief among that, the work with the dispatch and to get that, the work that we did on the 911 dispatch, get that through to the voters, kept our credit rating in place for the 18th consecutive year, the AAA credit rating, which means so much to not only this county, but to the entire community, including the city of Grand Rapids, who took advantage of that credit rating when they were working on the flood project. The airport transition got done. The work with Switch, bringing them into the community was a big deal. And this year, we got our hands full as well. Probably the biggest thing we have on our plate is the appointment of the new Administrator Controller. Darryl has announced his retirement effective the end of June. This is obviously a big deal, as it's been 19 or 20 years since we've last gone through this process. And as you know, we're not in session all the time, so having that Administrator Controller in place is very important, because that's where a lot of the work is done while we're not in session. We're going to continue to work on our space needs issues that are in front of us. And we got lots of task force and committees, subcommittees that have been formed, some that started last year that'll culminate this year, some pretty important ones, like the one dealing with the lead issues in our county, the Friend of the Court Task Force and the Land Bank. And then, of course, our budget. We continue to be proud of the fact that we pass balanced budgets and do not run deficits at the end of the year. And I'm sure that we will want to continue to do that this year. And it is challenging to always do that, because we are mindful that, you know, there are needs that need to be met and funds that need to pay for that. But, you know, we are in a period where even though our economy is doing well, the amount that we get in new property taxes, which is what we rely on, those are just incrementally increasing year over year. I think, what was it, 500,000 just this past year, despite all the new building in Kent County. So we'll have our hands full, but I am very confident of this board with the current leadership, much of it continuing on from the prior years. And just again, I'm very honored to have your confidence. And at any time, if you have questions, I'm always available. Just give me a call, and I'm happy to talk to you. So with that, let's move to our next agenda item, which is Item 7, election of a Vice Chair. And I will open the floor for a nomination for Vice Chair. Could go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Mandy Bolter.
All right. We have motion and support.
Mr. Chair, I would move that nomination because a unanimous ballot be cast for Mandy Bolter as our Vice Chair of Kent County Board of Commissioners.
Is there a second? Support? All right. Any discussion? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, Mandy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, all board members. I'm just totally honored to be elected by you guys and also, of course, honored by my constituents to even be here. I look forward to all of what we have coming up and continuing Jim's leadership. We have, as Jim mentioned, all of the larger items, but of course, I'm always available as well and look forward to open communication and just continuing to further our working relationship. So, thank you.
Good. Thank you, Vice Chair. We move then to Agenda Item Number 8, which is the election of a minority Vice Chair. And I will open the floor for a nomination. Commissioner Morgan. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move Carol Hennessy for that. Need support by Commissioner Corndyke. Any other nominations?
Mr. Chair, I would move that nomination because a unanimous ballot be cast for Carol Hennessy as our minority Vice Chair for the Kent County Board of Commissioners.
And there's support. Any questions? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you. I am honored to be back on this commission this year, and I'm really pleased to be able to be minority Vice Chair again. Last year, I was Vice Chair at Legislative and Human Resources, and this year, we'll switch back over to Finance. Our two committee systems, our standing committee system, it really does work, and both of them are very valuable to the work that we do. I'm very pleased to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know you're very capable of doing both, because you have done both in the past. All right. With that, we move to Agenda Item Number 9, which is public comment. At this point, if there's any public comment, please come forward, state your name and your address, and you have three minutes to address the group. Good morning.
Good morning. I've had the privilege of meeting many of you. To those who I haven't met, I'm Ben DeHan, and I'm a senior at North Wayne Christian High School. And my address is 1320 Farrow Avenue. So Commissioner Jones, I found out it's my Commissioner, and it was great to meet you. And thank you for being our Commissioner. And over the next couple of days, I get the privilege of shadowing Mr. Coleman, and I get to be at this meeting and get to go back to his business and kind of observe how he runs a business and also gets to serve on the local government board. So it's great to be able to be here, and thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment this morning? I see none, so we will move then... Oh, I'm sorry. Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Eric John Chapiniak, 3725 St. Muritz Way. So Mr. Antor is my Commissioner. Glad to be here this morning and just to come out and see other elected officials being sworn in. I'm Kent County's youngest elected official, and I serve on Kenwood Hills Public Schools' Board of Education, beginning, well, my inauguration is next Monday. But I just wanted to come out and wish the best to this board. And I helped out with, I know a couple of the commissioners who are running in November. So congratulations to all of you for being here, and I wish you all the best and keep putting Kent County first. Thank you.
Any other public comment this morning? All right. Then let's move to Agenda Item Number 10, which is the Consent Agenda, for which I will call on Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. I would move the Consent Agenda, please.
Support by Commissioner Coleman. Any questions or comments? I see none. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Tallin.
Yes.
Vonk.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
And Mr. Chair.
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. We then move to Agenda Item Number 11, which are our resolutions. We just have the ones today for which I will call on Commissioner Mast. Thank you, Chair. I'm pleased to be able to offer the first resolution of calendar 2017, which is the appointments to various boards, commissions, and committees that's before us. It's a result of a lot of work by the various interview committees, and then the Legislative Committee, and then now to the board. So I move that resolution.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Breavy. And you are right, this does take into account all the work that was done by the previous Legislative Committee headed up by former Commissioner Schroll. Any questions or comments on this? I see none. This is not a roll call vote, so all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item Number 12 is next, appointments. A is the standing committees. This has been developed at my recommendation, and including the leadership there, you'll see that the, of course, Commissioner Bolter as our Vice Chair will chair the Legislative Committee. Commissioner Jones will chair the Finance Committee. I have great confidence in Commissioner Jones, who served as Vice Chair of that board last year, of that committee last year. And Commissioner Hennessy will, as she mentioned, come back to the Finance Committee, which she had served on previously as Vice Chair. And then Commissioner Steck will now be Vice Chair for the Legislative Committee. That group of four individuals I just noted, as well as myself, then constitute the Executive Committee that typically meets once a month, and oftentimes will make recommendations on some of the issues that come before the board. So with that, I guess I will open up this up to a motion to approve. Okay, Commissioner Voorhees.
Support.
For the Vice Chair, Bolter. Got to use the saying that. Any questions or comments on this? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And then the next item is our additional, both Commissioner and citizen appointments to committees in the county. And I'm not sure exactly why. I think it just comes down to state law a lot of times. Our various committees and commissions are either appointed by the recommendation of the Board through the Legislative Committee, or they are done by recommendation of the Chair. And you just have the ones that were, you approved the ones in Resolution Number 11, which came from the Legislative Committee. These in turn then are the ones that were, are being recommended by myself. And you can look at those there. If there's any questions, let me know. Otherwise, I will take a motion to approve these.
I move.
Support.
By Chair Bolter and support by Commissioner Breavy. Any questions or comments on these? I see none. This is not a roll call vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. With that, we then move to our next Agenda Item Number 13, which is our subcommittees. I guess this is the same as reports. So, are you... No, I'm sorry. Okay. So these are the subcommittees, that's right, that we have to... Some of these are already in existence, but under law, we have to reestablish them on an annual basis. So the first one there, Administrator Controller Recruitment Subcommittee, as noted, we're in the process of replacing this important role in our governance. And that committee there is the one that I've, Subcommittee that I've created to address the job. Well, you can see the charge there, determine the process to recruit for and recommend to Board of Commissioners the appointment of the County Administrator Controller. Obviously, we, our timeline is 2017 to complete that. The next one is the Friend of the Court Engagement Task Force. This is one that was being created in conjunction with the Circuit Court to address concerns that were brought to this Board, I want to say in November or October, about one of the Friend of the Court programs. The charge is written there, and this is a very short-term Subcommittee, one that, or Task Force, one that we hope will be completed by the end of the first quarter. Next, we have the Land Bank Review Subcommittee. This actually is a reinstatement of one that existed last year, which is looking at the land bank process, which should be reviewed every five years per our original, when we passed that program. Those stay the same. We do believe that we should be able to complete this process probably in the first quarter of 2017, and Commissioner Vice Chair Bolter will continue to chair that committee. Lead Task Force is an important one that actually is a renewal from one that we created towards the end of last year. That's addressing the issues of lead in Kent County, because we do have one of the higher lead-based exposure statistics for Kent County, and we want to do what we can to investigate that and make recommendations on that. The timeframe is basically the end of the year. The one change on this one, former Chair Schroll, or Vice Chair Schroll, I should say, was the Chair of this particular Task Force. I have asked Commissioner Breavy to now chair that, and other than that, there were no changes to that one. And then finally, we have the Standing Rules Subcommittee. This is one that we do every two years after an election. This is just to look at our own rules, and this is actually at the recommendation of our Legislative Chair. So I worked with Vice Chair Bolter on creating this committee, and this one usually goes pretty fast. The timeline is by the end of April that we have that completed. So I don't think we take a motion on this, but did want to make sure everybody understood what's going on in this area. As I mentioned, I had somebody this morning, I think we got a lot of work on the front end, which is going to be precipitated by the subcommittees that make this year a little unusual in that regard, because a lot of times, these subcommittees are getting set for the first time at the beginning of the year. And in this case, we got some carryovers that'll probably be done during the first quarter. Are there any questions on the Subcommittee and Task Forces that are going to be in place here this year? Okay. I see none. So we move to our next item, which is 14, next Agenda Item. This is miscellaneous. We didn't have a report on here either, so we'll take any reports, if anybody has any, as well as miscellaneous comments. Good morning. Commissioner Corndyke.
Thank you, Chair. I would just like to recognize and thank the elected officials that are in the audience today. Stay Rub Garcia, thank you for coming. And also, Grand Rapids City Commissioner Linder, thank you for coming this morning. We appreciate that, having you in attendance.
Excellent. Commissioner Breavy.
I just wanted to thank my family for coming. My boys Jonah and Micah are there in the crowd, and Jonah was a little disappointed that he was going to miss recess this morning, so hopefully we can get him to school on time. So, and my in-laws, and my mom too, and my husband Mark.
Good to have our priorities here. Very good. Any other miscellaneous or reports this morning? I'm not seeing any. So this is oftentimes our shortest meeting of the year, our organizational meeting again. Thank you for everybody being part of our process this morning as we have the swearing in. And again, I want to welcome our three new members here to the commission and look forward to working with you this year. So with that, I will move to Agenda Item 15 and call on Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. I would move to adjourn, and subject to the call of the Chair, and to Thursday, January 26, 2017, at 8:30 a.m. for an official meeting.
Support. Your support. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned.
I am Kent County. I am Kent County.
I am Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County. We are Kent County. We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County. We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County. I'm Kent County. Somos Kent County.
Mas era Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County. Oh, yeah.